Becker.
Here.
Buckley. O'Flaherty. Klein.
Here.
Doe.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Chair Maxwell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. The call to any changes or differences to the meetings of the last minutes?
Do you want to approve the agenda?
Of the agenda? Yeah, I'm sorry. Any questions, comments?
I move to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
Firsted, seconded by Mr. Klein.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed on that? None opposed? Okay.
Sorry, again, be aware, I'm new at this. Sorry, public participation for the hearing.
Have I got the minutes for the December 4th meeting?
Oh, sorry. Yep.
And do you want to do the vice chair?
Oh, yes. Nomination for a vice chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Wouldn't anyone like to propose someone? Ron? Correct?
Yeah, what did we say here? Can't even find my notes. Well, I'll nominate Christina Doe.
So noted.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Who's the second?
Rocco.
Is Becker the second?
Becker.
Becker?
Yes.
Bucky. Sorry, excuse me, Buckley. O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Doe?
Yes.
Wright?
I abstained.
Yes.
Chair Maxwell.
Yes.
You can vote for yourself.
Motion passes.
I think you'd be your biggest advocate.
Yeah.
Again, bear with me, I'm going through the procedures. Open to approve minutes?
I move approval of the December 4th minutes. Seconded.
Approved by Klein, seconded by Jerry. So noted.
We just need a vote, voice vote on that.
I'm sorry?
We need a voice vote on that.
Oh. Approval vote, please.
Becker?
Aye.
Buckley. O'Flaherty. Klein?
Yes.
Doe?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Open to public hearing for...
We had public participation first, yeah, just right off the script.
Sure. Open to public participation at 6:05 PM. Any applicant that comes to the podium that has any...
This is items, people want to speak that are not on the agenda.
Oh, correct. Any items not on the agenda can come forward now and speak to whatever they choose. And I believe that is no one. So, closed?
It's not a hearing, it's just public comments, so then we can move to the public hearing now.
Okay. Open up all the hearings regarding the agenda at hand.
Just read the, go and read the actual public hearing off the agenda.
Okay. And this is the one for, for, correct?
No, 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 for Verizon, just read right off the agenda.
Petition by Verizon.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing petition by Verizon Wireless represented by Dan Dolan Realty Advisors LLC for a special use permit to co-locate an antenna open to the existing AT&amp;T tower located at 1500 South 7th Street and constructed, and construct associate equipment.
We'll have the applicant get up first for their presentation.
Wonderful. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Doug Dolan with Dolan Realty Advisors, and we represent Verizon Wireless, who's been looking to improve cell service in this community for a few years now. Our proposal originally started as a freestanding cell site because we had issues with our, the site that we're now proposing, because the tower wasn't structurally capable of handling our equipment. Since then, we've worked with AT&amp;T for the past year, and we did find that the existing AT&amp;T tower at 1500 South 7th Street had existing horn antennas at the very top of the tower, which were not being used anymore. So because of that, we were able to remove those antennas for our structural analysis, and the tower now works. So I'll go through for a moment to show you, first of all, is everyone familiar with the site? Again, this is an existing 300-foot AT&amp;T tower. Our proposed antennas will be at the 125-foot level. So these are simply panel antennas, about six feet high and one foot wide, that'll be on the existing, existing tower. So this, this tower is, again, owned by AT&amp;T, 300 feet, and will be 125, so will be, probably be about a third of the way up, that, well, a little bit more than a third of the way up on the, on that tower. This was a snowy day last winter when these photos were taken, but our equipment area will be at the base. We're going to landscape the equipment area and conceal it from, from the street. Right now, it's just an open chain link fence, so we're going to add landscaping, which will actually improve the existing, existing conditions of, of the tower. This is a photo of the survey and of the property. This is the, the entire property is owned by AT&amp;T. You'll see in here our access drive and our utility easement, but, so that's, that's more of a legal item. I wonder if we have a pointer, do we have a pointer?
I have a cursor here, we can...
Yeah, it might help. These, these on, I know they get a little confusing when we look at all the, the items, but I want to go back one more, but this, this again is the, yeah, that's, that's the center of the compound where the cursor is, and that's going to be where we're going to expand the existing compound to include equipment cabinets for Verizon Wireless. Verizon will connect those cabinets by cable to the existing tower, and again, go at the 125-foot level. That's the diagram of the elevation view of, of the tower, and that's, the cursor, thank you, is pointing out where the attachment of, of the antennas will be. It'll be a nine total antennas, three antennas per sector, and it'll, it'll not just enhance coverage and capacity for this area, but it'll help the whole community. It'll offload capacity from existing cell towers in, in the city, which will alleviate pressures and drop calls, busy signals, slow data speeds throughout the community. So that's, it's, it's interesting with these cell sites now, it used to be all about phones and all about calls, and now it's more about data. Data is, is, is what's swamping the system, so to speak. So these sites not only help with call coverage, but they really help with capacity on data speeds. This is a diagram which shows the landscaping that'll be added to the existing site. Currently, it is simply a chain link fence relatively open to 7th Street, but the additional landscaping will help screen, not just our equipment, but it'll help screen the existing AT&amp;T equipment. That concludes it. So I'll, I'll leave it back, I think this is probably the one that's the most helpful view of the existing site, and our equipment will be on the right-hand side of that existing tower. And just, perhaps it's worth noting that the equipment at the very top of the AT&amp;T tower, those red, it's hard to see in that diagram, but they're large, like microwave hops, horns is what they're called, those are dead. They've been dead for a couple of years at least, so AT&amp;T has just agreed that when all the way up the chain, they said that we could, that Verizon could remove those old antennas, which basically relieved any stress on the tower and allowed us to co-locate. So, kind of a long about way, but that, that's how we came to be and how we, how we are at the, at this site. So I'm available for any questions or comments from you or the, any of your participants tonight.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
At this point, I'd like to open it to the city for their presentation.
Yes, thank you, Chair. There's a staff report in your packets, as the applicant mentioned, a little bit of the history of that, what they're requesting. Again, that's co-location, which does any antenna co-locate in commercial property, industrial property does require special use permit, so that's what they're applying for. They noted the location of the antenna. Co-location, that's a good diagram showing the, where that will be, I guess it'll be nine antennas, so I guess there's one over here, two.
Yeah, three centers.
Six here and then three there, antennas.
Three, three, and three.
Okay. So nine antennas total, about a third of the way up on the site, they'll, of course, lease an area about 21 and a half feet to 60 and a half feet, building pad for the generator, other equipment will be on a pad by 10 by 15. They'll use the current access to the tower from 7th Street, and then they'll come off to the south end there of the tower with their equipment and lease area. Be surrounded by a seven, seven-foot-high chain link fence, the top one foot of that will be barbed wire, which will face inward as required. They're proposing plantings around there that meet the UDO in terms of height, there'll be six-foot-high evergreen shrubs around that fenced-in area. They did submit a, also a letter indicating how they meet the 11 conditions for a special use for a cell antenna, as described in the UDO. If you may know, the Verizon's been looking in this area for quite a while, last four or five years, actually had a, back in 2014, a tower proposed behind the building to the north that was denied by the city. There was indication that they should try and co-locate on the Jason AT&amp;T tower, they actually came back in 2015, got a special use permit, and a building permit issued for that work, it never did progress based on the cost that it was to Verizon to do the work. So recently, in 2017, the different petitioner came forward in association with Verizon to try again to put a 140-foot tower behind the building to the north in the back, that was denied by the commission and the city council, and that time it was explained they didn't go forward with the co-location because of the cost, so they've been working, as the applicant explained, working to reduce the cost they, to do to add the equipment to the tower. They're also going to be a different type of pad they're putting down, instead of cutting the existing one, they're using, the Verizon contractors do the work instead of AT&amp;T workers, which reduce the cost too. That was explained by the applicant also in their letter, so they're going forward with the co-location, which is good news, I guess, so there'll be able to be additional Verizon service and co-location, which everybody and the residents kind of wanted down there, so it took a while to get to, but it's a good thing. So, of course, any special use, you have the findings of fact, which the, we're recommending they do meet in terms of meeting all the applicable UDO requirements, also the not be a detrimental effect on the surrounding neighborhood with the co-location, much better than putting up a new tower. Instead of, instead of a new tower, the facility will be fully screened, surrounded by a fence, meeting all the requirements of the UDO. They'll provide the necessary utilities, they're going to provide access easement, utility easement to get their access rights to the equipment and the utilities that they need. So, in terms of any citizen response comments, we did, in terms of before the hearing, did receive two emails, one from Katie and David Poole, 630 Karen Avenue, indicating their support of the project, also received an email from Scott Cole of Cole Pallet Services, they're the business directly south of the tower, mentioning they have no objection to the special use request, and both copies of those are provided in your packet and part of the hearing. So staff recommend approval, there's a motion, a sample motion provided, recommending approval of the special use based on the findings of fact and based on the plans that were part of your packet and labeled as Exhibit A.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's anyone from the public wishing to speak to this item, if so, please come forward and present your name and address if you'd like to discuss this.
Yes, you do have to come to the mic.
That's how most people know me, strangely enough, yes.
That's why I knew she wouldn't be far. I'm Tony Moon, and I live at 1503 South 7th, so I look out at this tower, and my only concerns are health issues and noise. Right now, I'm told that my house is this far from the tower if it were to fall, so I don't want anything, I was happy to hear you weren't extending it at all, there wasn't any extensions, but I know nothing about this stuff, and I just want to make sure there's no health concerns, I'm getting up there, I just, I just want to make sure that this is, I'm not moving, I don't plan to move anywhere, so...
And I'm sorry, as a matter of formality, can you just, again, state your name and address?
Tony.
Yes, thank you.
1503 South 7th.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do you know how far your house is from the tower? How many feet? It's, I noticed it's directly across the street, and I wondered how far it is.
You know, I bought the house from my brother-in-law, and he told me I've got like a foot clearance between the tower and if it were to fall in the house.
Do we have that in the record?
So, 300 and, at 305 feet? I, I don't know, but it's directly...
Well, there's 1503 and 1411 next to you, and I wondered how far each of those houses is from the tower.
Well, the, in the findings here, the proposed equipment on the ground is approximately 275 feet to the nearest residential property, so that's the closest residential, I'm not sure which house you're in, but the closest one is 275, so 300 feet probably makes sense, so the closest is 275, so it's quite a ways away.
I think what, I think what Ron's asking is how tall is the tower?
The tower's 300 feet tall, so if it ever did go over...
Oh.
Nobody thinks it will, I know, but they have gone over, and I'm wondering if it would reach that house.
Yeah.
Well, the closest residential, I think, zone property is about 275 feet, so...
And then the building next door, do we know how far the Cole Pallet building is from the tower?
It's got to be around 275, 300, probably.
I think they're further south than I am west. I'm directly west.
Well, here's the equipment's going to be here.
They're west, the pallet company is in south.
Yeah, they're right here.
Yeah, they're, they're, when I look out my door, they're there, and the tower's right there.
And then 1411 is right next to you.
Dan, can you tell us how long the tower's been in place?
I don't know, 70s, 60s?
Yeah, and so I would assume that structurally, there really isn't anything wrong with it, hasn't been tackled so far.
Well, maybe the applicant can address any concerns with noise, is this equipment make any noise, or?
Yes, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Regarding noise, we'll have a backup emergency generator, which will sound like an air conditioning unit when it does go on, but it doesn't, it only operates should there be a power outage in, in the area. So, it'll actually provide communication should there be an outage when people rely on their cell phones, but it's unlikely that anyone would hear it, you know, 275 feet away. It's tested once a week, they burn through some fuel, and they test it for about 10 minutes on a Monday at like 11:00 AM, but that's all, it'd be, sound like an air conditioning unit on the side of your home. Regarding, regarding health concern, well, let me talk about structural first, we're actually enhancing, by approving this application, you enhance the structural capacity of the tower, because we're still going to strengthen the tower to put our attachments on it, we're removing the heavy weights on top of the tower, which was making it less strong, so by approving this application, you actually enhance the structural integrity of, of that tower.
Does that also reduce the height of the tower?
You know, I, if it does, it's only by a few feet, it's hard to tell from that tower, but it's, there are, they call them horns, so we're actually not going to reduce any structural membranes of the, we're not going to reduce any, pull any steel off the tower, we're just going to remove the attachments that are, that are attached to that steel structure.
Yeah, the horns you can see up here, so the, the height of the tower will be the same, it's just going to be less...
Right.
...equipment on top, yeah.
Yeah, which, and improve the, perhaps the sleekness of the tower, the horns are big, you know, it's very visible.
And if I may, for the edification of everyone, what is the, the proposed benefit in terms of the area as far as the reception is concerned?
So it's, it'll, it'll enhance the coverage for at least a half mile and up to a mile.
Okay.
On top of that, though, it will enhance the coverage of the neighboring cell sites by offloading capacity, so much like a highway or a road gets busy, neighboring roads, by building a new highway, you offload the, the other highways and roads around it.
Okay, thank you.
Other than the antenna that you're talking about tonight, putting on a tower, can anything else be added to it without coming back here?
Okay, now, are you speaking of our application, like of Verizon Wireless? Are you speaking of...
Yeah, I mean, can you add other equipment, or have other companies come in and add more stuff to the tower?
Another company would have to come back in and get a special use permit.
But that company could probably add more, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're approving the plan, so it demands, you know, if they upgrade equipment, which is very common for cell carriers, that would be fine, this get a permit, they wouldn't have to come back through the hearing process, but if they add additional antennas, it all depends on the extent of the improvements they would make. So we're approving the plans, but any maintenance upgrades, they wouldn't have to come back, but anything major changes, they probably would.
Regarding health and safety, that comes up, we operate at a fraction of what the FAA and FCC allow us to, to operate in. You know, usually in public hearings, the, the federal government has said through OSHA and through the FAA that this has been deemed safe for the past 35 years, that it's been in operation, so they typically don't even allow health and safety to be a factor because it's been deemed safe. So typically, at the ground level of these cell sites, it's equivalent to a Wi-Fi system or a baby monitor. So there's 100,000 cell sites plus in the US, and again, it's been around for 35 years, and it's been deemed safe by all the people that evaluate these things. So, there's public statements on sites like the American Cancer Society and all, if, if anyone has, has further, but we usually don't comment much on public safety because it's been considered settled, settled law with the municipalities.
Did you indicate whether there'd be a light on at the top of the tower at all times?
So, nothing we do would, would cause a light to be there, if it's over 200 feet, there typically is a light, and to tell you the truth, I don't, I would assume there is a light on this tower, because any tower over 200 feet to be in compliance with the FAA needs to be lit.
Well, that thing sticks up pretty high in the air, so we don't want any airplanes running into it.
It's already lit, it's already lit.
Yep. Yeah, we, and nothing we do will change the outward, will change the height or the requirements by the FAA or the FCC.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Do you have a request from?
Hi, I'm Dave Lehman from 621 Karen Avenue, and was involved when Dolan Realty first came in 2014 and proposed the new tower, and so I'm happy that the co-location as outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance is being pursued, and the first question I had is regarding the, the building that will house the generator, and it's located, its proposed location is on the southwest corner of the tower, okay? And from, that puts it, you know, close to the residential area, but, and I'm assuming that given the choice of like moving it a little further east would probably add expense to move it a little further away from the residential, from your utilities where you're going to tie into the fiber and the...
Yeah, well, yeah, yes, I can address that.
Okay.
You know, if we moved it 20 or 30 feet, I don't know that would make a difference. We're going to screen our, we're going to screen it, it'll be, we have some natural, we're going to add all the plantings that you see around there. Again, the noise level is not anything more than an air conditioning unit, and again, it wouldn't even be on except for in case of emergencies, so when there's a power outage. So, it sits dormant 99.9% of the time, and I doubt you'd hear it anyway at 250 feet away, I doubt that you'd, and you wouldn't see it either because of the plantings and the screening, so...
Yeah, the buildings proposed right here, here's the tower legs, and here's the building for the AT&amp;T tower, so it's no closer than the existing tower, the, the building for the AT&amp;T tower, the existing one, so it's not any closer.
It's that little box, right?
Right here.
Right there, okay.
Yeah. And as noted, there's landscaping around it, and this is the drive extension that will, the driveway area that's extended, but it's right here.
And I would, I would say, and I don't know, but almost any tower now has a backup generator, and this is an important tower for AT&amp;T, I'm sure they have a backup emergency generator now that serves, services this, which may or may not even be known, or may have never heard it in the last 30 or 40 years, but they would have an emergency backup power system too.
Thank you. Mr. Lehman, did you have any other questions, or does the public have any other questions that they'd like to address?
Yeah, it's, the exact timeline's going to be up to Verizon Wireless as far as when it's going to be approved. We have to go through the permitting process, the zoning approval, and then the building permit stage, we have to, and there's environmental review, there's FAA, an FCC review and approvals, so those can stretch out, but this is a site that they want, and they want to get built, so, you know, it could be this year, it could be next year, depending on what happens.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing and open it to the commission for comments.
I don't have anything.
I have no further comments or questions.
I have nothing.
Yeah. What, what were the, you talk about the AT&amp;T horn, dead horn, what were the horns used for?
Microwave transmissions.
Which is not, is obsolete now, or?
Yeah, it's, it's, no, it's not obsolete, I mean, they are, there are still microwaves in effect, they just redesigned, and over the years, they changed their design patterns, and I can't, I can't answer why they're obsolete, I just know that they're, they're out of service and have been out of service for a period of time. So they've been abandoned in place, would be the term they use, just abandoned in place, and so our application would actually, they wouldn't remove them unless they had to, so because of our application, we need to remove them to strengthen that tower, that's why they're coming down.
Does this location still give you all the, the things you were looking for at the other location?
Yeah.
Can you still do those from this location?
Yeah, the original location would have been cheaper, far cheaper than actually, typically when you co-locate on an existing tower, that's the preferred route, just faster and easier and less controversial, and that's the preferred route. This tower was not suitable at the time for co-location, so now that we've kind of re-engineered it, and AT&amp;T has told us they no longer use those horns, we're now able to co-locate on here, so we don't, it'll be the exact same equipment, so in other words, to answer your question, no, it wouldn't affect us, it doesn't diminish our capacity or capabilities by co-locating on this tower.
Anyone else? Okay, at this point, I would like to ask for a motion by one of the committee members to move forward.
I can make the motion.
First by Mr. Klein.
Based upon the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the city council approval of a special use permit for a cellular antenna on the AT&amp;T tower located at 1500 South 7th. for a cellular antenna on the AT&amp;T tower located at 1500 South 7th Street, per the plans dated 12/10/19 and attached as Exhibit A, and subject to any staff comments being addressed prior to issuance of a building permit.
Thank you.
Second?
Second. Second by Jerry. All in favor?
We need a roll call.
Can I interrupt for just a second real quick? I have a very quick question. Given that in the notes or in your background, it stated there are six antennas, and he had stated nine. Do we have to make any?
No, the plans attached show the nine.
They do show the nine, okay.
I think they counted a few.
Just one clarification on that, thanks.
That's an important thing. I think they'd like the opportunity to go to nine for capacity reasons. The plans may have shown six because that's going to be their initial bill.
So the plans show six, that's what I counted, but I maybe missed.
Yeah, yeah. So the answer is that we are designing it for six. While it's not unheard of that as capacity grows, that we increase it to two. But they'd be on the same platform, in the same locations, and everything would be the same. There's a space on the platform for a third antenna, which we don't install.
Do we need to do an amendment and add that, anything about that in?
If you want to. I don't think it'd be a big enough change where we'd require them to come back, so.
It's not in the motion.
Yeah, we're good.
The number?
Yep.
So call for a vote.
Becker.
Yes.
Buckley. O'Flaherty. Klein.
Yes.
Doe.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Chair Maxwell.
Yes.
Are there any staff reports?
Just a couple of updates. We do have a new commission member, Trixie O'Flaherty, who was appointed last month by the mayor and council. She couldn't make tonight's meeting, so her first meeting will be, our next meeting in two weeks. Trixie was owner of Gordon Hardware, maybe, somebody you know her. She was also formerly on the Economic Development Commission with the city. So, and we also welcome new chair, Max Maxwell.
Thank you.
Appointed last month as new chair. Some activities by the council coming up. We are going to discuss with the committee, the whole of the council next Monday. Staff's been working on some sign amendments. We talked about that a little bit with the commission in the past. So we drafted up some changes on that regarding making the signage content neutral. We're also dealing with temporary signs. We're trying to make the regulations a little bit easier to understand, a little more business-friendly. Allowing, we're going to propose to allow digital display signs, which are special use permits because they're prohibited now as a permitted, with a permit, building permit with certain conditions. Those conditions pretty much somewhat the same that the commissions approve with some of these past ones. We're going to reduce the time, though, where messages can change. So the council, it's not going to be official action, just discussion, will get input. And then we'll set a public hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, probably in March, one of the March meetings for a public hearing and review by the commission at that time. So you'll definitely see that back. Of course, you have heard about the announcement for Candy Company. I put their press release in front of you. That's great news, so thanks for the commission's hard work. That was, did the amendment for Chicago West Business Center, where that's located, last fall, for the changes in that. So that's progressing. At the last committee, or the council meeting, they did approve a extension for, if a few of you may remember, a solar garden that was approved down on Gurla Road near 1st Street a little over a year ago. They applied to the state, they were not selected in the first round. They reapplied, but the agreement that was approved with the city stated that one year, their zoning was contingent for one year. And then they could ask for an extension via resolution approved by the council. The council did grant that one-year extension for them. Since they reapplied, they didn't get chosen the first time. They're going to try and do it again to get the solar farm there. So the council did approve that at their last meeting. A couple, two public hearings coming up on the next meeting, February 19th, which you did send, we sent emails out on. The former Cheeseboro Elementary School on Taylor Street there. There's a private therapeutic day school that liked to locate in there. So that's a special use. Also, 1406 Sycamore Road. There's a proposed drive-through coffee shop, ice cream shop, proposed out in that strip center area out there in Sycamore Road. So those are the two hearings. Also, we received plans for Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers Restaurant with dry-through. This week, there'll be a hearing in March on that. Any dry-throughs as special use, they're looking to locate in the former, or the Appleby site. They're going to demo the restaurant and put up a new building with a dry-through. So that requires a special use, any dry-through. And they asked to do a final plan through the commission and council, landscaping, architectural rendering, site plan, engineering. So that will be coming sometime in March, probably looks like the March hearing for that. So that's good news, too. They've been looking around a little bit in the town. But we finally got there. Plans are going forward, so. That would be it, thanks.
Thank you. Anything from the commission to report or comments? With that, I'd like to add a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First by?
Haven't gotten to say that for four years.
Seconded by Jerry, thank you very much. And with that, I call the...
Voice vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, voice vote on the, yes, on the...
All's in favor, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved, same sign? Commission, clue.